Andres, how long have you been at Liberty Hill now?
Oh, it's been about almost, I think I might be reaching a year anniversary.
Yeah, yeah, I think mid-September last year.
That's great.
Like an old timer now.
I got the grace to show for it. You can't tell on the Zoom world.
That's great. That's awesome.
I don't know what we would have done without Andres this year. So it's wonderful that he arrived right at the right moment.
That's awesome. That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm so curious to catch up after Antonio. Just it's great to see you in this space.
Yeah, happy to, happy to. Likewise.
Welcome.
Hello.
Welcome, Lindsay.
Hello, everyone.
Lindsay, when it's time to have the election with a vote, I might ask you a couple of questions, but should be a straightforward process.
Not a problem.
Yep. Michelle, and I should mention, I don't know if someone already mentioned to you, but what I'll ask during the presentation, or before the presentation, is just to put a 15-minute timer, just so we have an idea of how long we're having a conversation. Well, the goal is not to cut you off, but just to know where we're at.
Thank you, Antonio. Yes, we know that you've got a lot of business to conduct, so we, Andres and I are going to try to keep it to our 10 minutes for our presentation.
And I'm good. I found a nice office. I have at least until 3 o'clock, so just for time, just so we know where we're at.
Sure. Hi, Commissioner.
All right, I'm looking at the clock and it's one, but we can wait a few minutes if needed. I see 15 participants. Are we still short a few commissioners?
Yeah, I think you need to subtract 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Subtract at least 6 from that.
Okay.
Actually, that didn't even include the city attorneys. Maybe we subtract 8.
Okay, let's just wait a few minutes.
Thank you.
Marta, I just recommend that maybe you keep an eye on who's coming in and when we actually get enough for a quorum.
Yeah, we're at 9 right now, so we're just one off. Thank you.
I'll stare at that number 18.
We defer it to be 19. Great. So my staff is about to send out a quick email reminder for those that might need it. Our apologies. See, 19. I think we're at 10.
Oh, yeah, I see. Okay, excellent. Great. So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a regular meeting of the City of Los Angeles Climate Emergency Mobilization Commission. My name is Antonio Sanchez. I serve as the first vice president of the commission. Today, I will chair until we elect a president, and then he or she will chair the meetings after that. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. It's 1:04. To begin, we'll establish quorum for today's meeting by taking roll call. I'll ask Ms. Sangalan from staff to please call the roll.
Thank you. The first, the first seat, the Indigenous Gabriela Tonga member is vacant. Next, Commissioner Rudy Ortega Jr. Absent. Indigenous Tumash member seat is also vacant. Next, Commissioner Jacqueline Badejo.
Present.
Commissioner Michael Martinez.
Present.
Commissioner Oscar Monje. Absent. Commissioner Monica Mejia.
Present.
Commissioner Luis Angel Martinez.
Present.
Commissioner Dora Fritsa Armenta. Absent. Commissioner Alfonso Directo Jr.
Present.
Vice President Antonio Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Jill Johnston. Absent. Commissioner Ross Zelen.
Present.
Second Vice President Daniel Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Lindsay Rose Madoff.
Present.
The first youth member seat is vacant. Next, Commissioner Michelle Gutierrez.
I see her unmute.
Hi, Michelle. Martinez, I mean, Michelle Gutierrez, sorry.
I see she's present.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? Does she have to confirm that she's present?
Yeah, she should answer to the roll call.
Okay, if for some reason your audio is not working, Michelle, could you please chat?
There's no chat function.
Oh, there's no chat function.
Get a thumbs up. It looks like her audio's not working, but she did give a thumbs up and is looking straight at the camera.
Okay, great.
Accept that.
As long as, yes, I'm having trouble with my screen here, but as long as she gave a thumbs up, I think that's affirmative. That should be good for voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Imelda Padilla.
Present.
Commissioner Jocelyn Duarte.
Present.
Thank you. First Vice President Sanchez, we have a quorum with 12 members present.
Thank you.
Absences, Commissioner Ortega Jr., Dora Fritsa Armenta, Johnston.
Hello, this is Jill Johnston. I was late, but I'm present.
Oh, you're present, okay. So then, we have 13 members present for the quorum, and then 3 absences.
Okay, thank you. So we have 13 commissioners present, 3 absences. Any of those absences excused?
Yes, 2 of them.
Which ones?
Commissioner Monje and Commissioner Fritsa Armenta.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have quorum. Thank you, Ms. Sangalan. Commissioners, I'll just remind you, as we move forward, if you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand, and I will attempt to call on everybody in a timely fashion and in order. If you do have the ability to turn your camera on, I think that it's great for everybody to see each other. If it's safe and you have the ability, please do so. We'll move forward to item number 2, Public Comment Period.
Could I ask a question first, Vice President Sanchez?
Yes.
As far as Michelle Gutierrez, is there a way that she can call in so she can at least participate if that's possible?
Hoping that Michelle heard you.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Mic off.
Great, thank you. Is that good, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move forward, as I mentioned, to item number 2. Ms. Garradae from staff, if you can, please let us know if we have any callers in the queue for general public comment.
First Vice President Sanchez, we have no callers in the queue for public comment. I will continue monitoring the line to see if anyone joins for at least 3 minutes. Since our meeting is occurring by teleconference, which is permitted by a special provision in the Brown Act that was recently enacted through AB 361 during the COVID pandemic, we are required to provide a reasonable amount of time to allow the public to register and log in to bring up their public comments at this teleconference meeting. So, we will keep the public comment period open for 3 minutes to give people an opportunity to log in or call into the number to make a public comment. The call-in number to make a public comment is 1-669-900-6833. That number is also listed on the agenda and can be found on the commission's website. Again, the number is 1-669-900-6833. I will now review the instructions for providing public comment that are provided in the agenda. Members of the public who wish to offer verbal public comment should dial 1-669-900-6833 and use Zoom meeting ID number 928-70958675, followed by the pound sign. Participants will be asked to press the pound sign again to continue. During virtual meetings, all attendees are automatically muted upon entry. When the chair addresses you for your opportunity to provide public comment, please use the raise hand function by pressing star 9 on your phone's keypad and press star 6 to unmute your call. Please state your name every time you speak for the benefit of captioners, interpreters, and attendees. Again, that number is 1-669-900-6833. Zoom meeting ID number 928-70958675, pound. We will keep the comment period open for another few moments here to allow any members, the public, to log in.
Thank you. Here we go.
3 minutes have passed since the chair asked for public comments, which is a reasonable amount of time to call in to present public comment. We do not have any callers in the line, therefore, the meeting may proceed.
Great, thank you. Then I will now close public comment and move on to the next item. Item 3 on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 19, 2022, regular meeting. Commissioners, I hope you've had time to review. If we come forward, I'll request a motion on a second to accept the minutes. Anyone?
Motion that we approve?
Thank you. That was Commissioner Padilla. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Zelen. So we'll call the roll.
Indigenous Gabriela Tonga member seat is vacant. Next, Commissioner Rudy Ortega Jr. Absent. Indigenous Tumash member seat is also vacant. Next, Commissioner Jacqueline Badejo.
Yes.
Commissioner Michael Martinez.
Yes.
Now, Oscar Monje. Absent. Commissioner Monica Mejia.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Angel Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Dora Fritsa Armenta. Absent. Commissioner Alfonso Directo Jr.
Yes.
First Vice President Antonio Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jill Johnston.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross Zelen.
Yes.
Second Vice President Daniel Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay Rose Madoff.
Yes.
The first youth member seat is vacant. Next, Commissioner Michelle Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Imelda Padilla.
Yes.
Commissioner Jocelyn Duarte.
Yes.
Thank you. First Vice President Sanchez, there are 13 eyes, 0 no's, 0 absences, 0 absences, or 3 absences, I'm sorry. So the item passes with 13 eyes.
Thank you. So we have 13 eyes, 0 nays, and 3 absents. No one abstained. We'll move on to item number 4, the Executive Director's Report.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for your valuable time. I just wanted to convey a couple of points here. One is that CMO is on the cusp of finalizing our community-friendly website and newsletter by mid-September. We're planning, we're also planning the next cycle for the Climate Equity LA Series as we wind down the reporting for this series. As you may have noticed, there's been a lot of media attention for the chief heat office and officer role because we're in the middle of summer, and it's something that the media has paid a lot of attention to because they want to know how it's going to impact how we manage climate hazards, but particularly extreme heat. And there's a lot going on there, so we'd have that presentation at the next meeting. Also, we're setting up interviews at the moment for the principal admin clerk and the deputy director that were approved by council for the CMO's growth and capacity to continue to expand. The other is that we want to go briefly over some of the administrative rules for attendance, and that is that, you know, not only is each member expected to attend our regular meetings and special meetings, but in addition to that, if you have to leave early, that may throw us off of quorum, and that may give us, you know, the inability to continue to vote. And therefore, it's very, very important that we understand that dropping off early or leaving early, one of you has notified me that you have to leave early today, so that's perfectly acceptable because we have more than quorum, but we really need to manage that since we don't have, you know, all 19 members. What else should I want to say here? So, the chair has asked us to help to keep better tracking, so we will be tracking absences, whether they're excused or unexcused, and probably be putting these rules in all of our communications to the commission so that it is common knowledge. And I think that that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I see a hand up from Ms. Garradae.
Okay.
Thank you, First Vice President Sanchez. Director Segura, I did want to ask if you had wanted to address the timeline and the reports.
Oh, yeah. Could you put that slide up, please? Great. All right. So, this is what basically we'll be talking about today during the presentation of the draft reports, but I wanted to give the commissioners sort of a heads up that where we are right now is in the draft report comment period. And the reason we determined that this should be a draft report is to give the public plenty of time between now and September 3rd to comment and give recommendations and edits and changes as they so choose, so that we can integrate it and have time to revise the final report and present it to the commission on September 20th. I don't think I need to go into a lot of detail here, but basically, today is the 23rd, so after today, they have until the public, anyone in the public has an opportunity to comment via email to send in their recommendations for edits for the 9/2 date. And the reason we picked 9/2 is because that will give our research team plenty of time to finalize the edits and to make sure that we check it internally through our internal process to present to you as a final report on September 25th. That's, I think that's about it. And the reason that we're trying to expedite this is because this city council will be very different come January, and we want to make sure they have an opportunity to see it and to deliberate on it through the normal process of council evaluation of the building decarbonization policies and reports. So hopefully, that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Can I ask a point-of-order question, Chair? Just wanted to make sure, Marta, this is related to item 5, right? Related to the draft report?
Well, both, there are, I don't know, I don't have the agenda in front of me right now, but we have 2 draft presentations today. One is a process report, like how we designed it, who was involved, what it looked like to engage the stakeholders, the innovations in this process to create an informed public and also to get information from the set of the process report. And then there's the recommendations and findings report, which is the second report that we have on here, and they're both being presented as drafts.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out because it was part of the director's report. Just want to make sure it's clear for Brown Act purposes, it relates to the agenda items.
That's right. Thank you.
So we'll take that as part of the executive director's report. Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Great. Okay, thank you. Is it appropriate to ask the commissioners if they have any comments or questions? Mr. Martin, your hand's still up.
My apologies. I'll try to get it down.
No problem. Okay, if no one has any questions or comments, we'll move forward to item 5. Alrighty, the next item is item 5, the presentation on a draft report from the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office in the Department of Public Works on the Engagement Model of the Climate Equity LA Series Part 1, Building Decarbonization. I'll ask staff to start the presentation. Before we, I just wanted to ask, we'll just ask that we start a 15-minute timer. Not necessarily that we're going to cut you off, but just want to make sure that we know how long this is taking and how we're moving forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Michelle Pritchard, and I am the Senior Director for Strategic Initiatives at the Liberty Hill Foundation, and thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with you today. And thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with you today about the inaugural Climate Emergency Equity LA Public Workshop Series. And I just want to start by saying that it's, it has really been an honor to be part of the first year of this very important office and its very urgent mission. So thank you for having us play a role. Today, we are going to briefly share about our planning and stakeholder engagement process and relay some key highlights from our Part One series on equitable decarbonization of buildings and homes for LA. And as you heard a moment ago, this presentation is supported by the draft report in your agenda packet for today, and we will soon be submitting process reports for Part Two and Three of the series on community-driven climate resilience and on the Justice Forty Initiative. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So Liberty Hill is very excited to be asked to serve as the Lead Partner for Stakeholder Engagement for the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office. And some of you may know that we played a similar role in 2018, 19 in assisting LA County to develop its first-ever sustainability plan. And one of our most fundamental commitments in that process was to enable community-based organizations to meaningfully engage their staff and members in shaping the curriculum and the policy recommendations and priorities. So along with the CMO staff, we were committed to that same model, and we co-designed this process with a set of community-based organizations, which is shown here on the right-hand side of the slide. Liberty Hill and CMO entered into MOUs or MEMOs of Understanding or subcontracts with these groups for a range of services, including participating in our planning meetings, in the curriculum design team, reviewing and preparing educational materials, promoting outreach to their constituents, facilitating and taking notes in our many breakout group discussion rooms, and also reviewing our final reports and recommendations. And I should say that for this, each of these community organizations will soon be receiving a $20,000 subcontract payment. Thank you. To help us design the Building Decarbonization Public Workshop Series, we created a design team. And here you can see the individuals who served and the, really the true breadth of expertise that they represent, from university faculty to community groups with significant knowledge of the subject, nonprofits like California Housing Partnership and NRDC, as well as key representatives from city and county agencies. And Liberty Hill and CMO staff together engaged in one-on-one interviews with most of the members of this design team to understand the key issues in building decarbonization and how to tackle it from the standpoint of providing a, a public engagement curriculum. We held two planning meetings in November of 2021 and again January of '22, and we continued to work with the individuals on this team throughout the final planning for the series, which took place in March. I should also say that many of these individuals also served as presenters in series. Next slide. Can we go to the next? There we go. This slide shows the attendance across the three workshops, and on the left you can see the topics that we addressed by date. On the right-hand side, you can see our attendance numbers. In total, we had over 200 unique individuals who joined us through the Part One series. And on average, we had about 115 people participating in each session with a number of folks coming to more than, more than just one, coming to two and even all three workshops. Importantly, all of the workshops offered simultaneous language interpretation in Spanish, as well as one or two Spanish-language breakout groups. And as you can see here, our strongest showing was really from the community-based organization anchors. Now, that refers to the groups that held MOUs with us and who turned out their community residents. But we also had great participation from a diverse array of other nonprofits, including the Sierra Club, Black Women for Wellness, American Institute of Architects, Holman Church, just really a long list, which again, you can see in our report. The workshops also attracted many staff from a number of city agencies, including Building and Safety, Planning, the DWP, Office of Petroleum and Natural Gas and Housing, as well as other government entities from the county, the Board of Offices, the AQMD, and the California Public Utilities Commission. Finally, I would just say we rounded out the attendance with a healthy showing from the academic community as well as business organizations and neighborhood councils. Slide. So our first series on March 10th, our first workshop, and by the way, this was all done on Zoom, was really an overview, an introduction on the theme of building decarbonization. And we drew upon the expertise of city, county, and community-based staff to talk about it. Here you can see the presenters from Physicians for Social Responsibility, the Mayor's Office, and the County Chief Sustainability Office. And I really do urge you all to take a look at the report, because, and also, you will be able to view, or you can view the full video proceedings on the Liberty Hill website. You can also find them soon on the CMO website, as soon as it is available. But the key points you can see here, building decarbonization is a powerful action that we can take to address climate change and improve public health. An energy justice framework must guide policy and avoid any unintended consequences. There are many opportunities, but there are also risks for environmental justice communities, especially displacement and community groups, technical experts, and all levels of government must work together. Next slide. And here you can get kind of a sense of the breakout group discussions. At every meeting, we held breakout groups, usually ten or twelve of them, with about eight to twelve people in each. They lasted twenty to twenty-five minutes and then were followed by a few of the facilitators reporting back to the full group before we adjourned. Each breakout group had a facilitator and a note taker and addressed part, addressed three questions with all of their participants. The note takers assembled all the proceedings and reclassified their comments into categories represented here in the pie charts. So you can see, our first question to the participants was around the benefits of building decarbonization. And what was most frequently cited were the public health benefits for improved indoor and outdoor air quality, as well as benefits for reduced energy costs over the long term, along with GHG reductions. Chief challenges included increased tenant costs, mentioned very frequently, as you can see, followed by concerns around adequate financing, implementation barriers. And then we asked all of the participants in question, "What can be done to make building decarbonization more equitable for you and your community?" And by far, the most frequently mentioned approach was to develop the equitable financing and investment models and to ensure extensive and ongoing community outreach. So with that, I want to pass it off to my coworker, Andres Gonzalez, who is Program Manager for Environmental Justice at Liberty Hill and who is truly an invaluable member of our team and really served as a backbone for all the planning and the Zoom meetings that we did. Andres?
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that. So with our second workshop on March 17th, the focus was on creating energy and housing justice with building decarbonization, featuring speakers Cameron Hurt from the LA Alliance for New Economy, also known as Lane Heather Rosenberg from AROF, Chelsea Kirk from Sage, and Blanca De La Cruz from California Housing Partnership. In the first half, a lot of the panel discussion was really focused around the impacts that decarbonization could have, you know, in both in opportunities and in challenges, including improving housing for low-income tenants, while also challenges through the potential of increased costs and displacement for low-income tenants. With one report, I believe that, which Cameron cited, found that in a survey of 3,200 South LA residents, over 47% cited difficulty paying rent or utility bills as their primary concern. This was a recurring theme throughout, with several, with tenants facing a lot of fears around landlords placing the cost of building decarbonization on renters and using opportunities of construction or rehabilitation as ways of displacing and evicting tenants. Later on, moving into kind of the opportunities for healthier homes and affordable housing, panelists discussed the particular needs of affordable housing organizations who are especially burdened in navigating, you know, very strict building decarbonization policies. These are organizations that already have to navigate complex financial investments and already complying with a lot of housing incentives and financial programs such as transformative climate communities. So a lot of what was discussed was how are these new building decar provisions able to align with, you know, pre-existing compliance for some of these funding sources? And overall, a key theme that came out of this was the need to tie building decarbonization with affordable housing preservation, not as exclusive, but as rather connected, interconnected goals. A lot of this cited a lot of pathways towards this being through financial incentives, early on tenant popular education, the preservation of affordable and multifamily buildings, as well as ensuring outreach to both tenants and building owners early on, as well as providing any technical support to navigate a building decarbonization process. Similarly, in breakout room discussions, a key theme that we heard coming out of, in terms of the benefits of it, was really public health, as folks identified that new, new building standards through building decarbonization would create much more healthier homes, as well as reduce a little bit the energy burden. Participants especially cited the growing impact of climate change and extreme heat and identified how building decarbonization could be a pathway towards greater energy resiliency. But likewise, in paralleling a recurring theme throughout a lot of these group conversations, a challenge that came up was the persistent fear of rising costs and the ways that landlords may be able to use construction or rehabilitation as a way of evicting folks or, you know, creating a lot of stressors on tenants in already precarious housing situations. And then finally, just some pathways forward through an equity lens. A lot of folks identified in this session really the opportunity of financial structures that could provide greater community input early on and allow community members to shape implementation of funding for some of these building decarbonization processes that would really center their own needs through building decarbonization as it related to housing justice. Finally, the third and last workshop for the Building Decarb series was focused on building decarbonization and economic justice through green workforce and a just transition lens. Analysts included Bethany Jones from Inclusive Economics, Robert Sarbenetta from the Office of the Mayor, Avni Jandhar from Emerald Cities Collaborative, and Roxana Tienin from Lane. We heard similarly a greater focus around workforce development here with panelists discussing the need to create training programs that would have matching jobs. In past instances, folks identified areas where apprenticeship programs or training programs, though with good intent, didn't necessarily always connect to a job. And a lot of panelists cited working with pre-existing schools, pre-existing local trade schools, as well as union-backed apprenticeship programs in order to build out these pipelines. Folks also identified the need to have an active partnership with the private sector, such as, for example, through joint labor management programs that would incentivize private sector investments into a qualified workforce around building decarbonization. And lastly, overarching all of these conversations was the need to engage early on with frontline communities and workers in the planning process and in the implementation of a building decarbonization, decarbonization effort. Particularly, we heard the theme of partnering with, you know, connecting with real local jobs that especially supported small BIPOC woman-owned businesses in Los Angeles and in the communities themselves. So these jobs aren't being created elsewhere, but are locally grown. And then lastly, in the breakout room discussions for this session, I, overwhelmingly, job creation was a benefit that came up a lot in conversation with folks. It was very clear that a big part of building decarbonization would involve a lot of work and a lot of workforce development. But there were a lot of questions around how these jobs are going to be created and for who. Similarly, in the challenges, there was a lot of discussion on how these jobs would be implemented and how they may also not necessarily go to frontline communities. There was emphasis on creating community jobs for community projects around decarbonization efforts. And similarly, partnering with these local tech colleges and union apprenticeship programs to build this out at a local community level. There was some mention of also alternative financial models in discussing how building decarbonization could equitably be implemented with financial project, with capital projects that were oriented around community development, community benefits, creating transparent systems, and giving community members an active role in determining how projects are going and how is housing being protected. So to supplement and kind of support all of these engagements through these workshops, parallel to all of this, oh, Rebecca? Are we at time?
Yes, I just wanted to notify you the fifteen minutes are up. Good.
Okay, cool. We just have the last two slides and we'll be wrapped up. So I'll just speak briefly, speak briefly on this. Parallel to all of this, we had two focus groups with the organization Sage and No Home Alliance, based in North Hollywood, with fifty-eight low-income tenants, in order to discuss and understand the impacts of building decarbonization. These tenant groups were mainly low-income, with a majority citing a lot of habitability issues, more than half not having access to air conditioning. And these were done through two-hour sessions that also included polling and surveys. Overwhelmingly, like key takeaways for this were concerns around the cost of decarbonization being passed on to tenants themselves, especially through fear of harassment with landlords would use retrofits as a way to kick out tenants. Groups identified the need for anti-displacement protections, the need for popular tenant education in order to understand the impacts and scope of building decarbonization, and in order to advocate for an anti-displacement implementation of building decarbonization. And participants also saw and supported the multi-benefits of building decarbonization, such as higher health standards and building standards. Overall, there was basic support for building decarb goals when done through a multi-benefit anti-displacement framework. And I will pass it back to Michelle. Michelle, you're muted.
So sorry about that. Yes, so last slide here. Andres really just went through the list of policy implications, and our next presentation is going to dive deeper into this. So let me just say on the right-hand side, some of the things we learned from this process were that people really appreciated the opportunity for public engagement and want to have more of that. They would like to see more of those small-scale focus groups, more outreach to diverse communities beyond the environmental justice communities, and more language access. Even while we interpreted everything and translated slides and so forth, making space for there to be in-language trainings and discussions, which is a high priority. So thank you. I think our final slide just lets you see how you can reach us, and we invite your, your, your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Commissioners. Any comments or questions? I see Commissioner Mejia.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, in memory of everything that happened. A question about the, the workshops. And I know I attended two of them, like, when they were recorded, I just accessed the recording afterwards. Are we, are we able to access, like, how many people, you know, saw it via a recording?
I'm sorry, you guys, we're, it's not appropriate for us to have a question-answer session for this report at this point. It's when the, the final draft is completed, then the Commission will have the opportunity to engage with the content. But for now, this is just a presentation for staff to, to receive and file.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Ferguson. If there's a different comment you want to make, your hands down.
I just wanted to say thank you for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so then at, at this moment in time, we won't take questions or comments. We'll just receive the report. Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. Okay, great. Thank you. Then we'll move forward to item six. The next item is the Presentation of Another Draft Report from the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office in the Department of Public Works, Report on Equitable Building Decarbonization: Equity-Focused Policy Recommendations for the City of Los Angeles. So if you want to begin with the report, please.
Actually, before we start that, Ms., if you don't mind, I've never been in a commission where I've been told that we can ask questions preceding a presentation. Never have I seen that. And is that because it's draft and we know for sure it's going to come back to us?
Correct. I can answer that. Yes, this is, so the, this commission is an advisory commission, and under the Charter, it's your duty to advise council when a final draft is submitted. when a final draft is submitted for comment and recommendation. So at this point, these are just drafts. They're available for the public to comment on. You know, you're welcome to to comment, to ask questions in your capacity as a member of the public, but at this time, it's inappropriate for the commission to to comment or to engage in your capacity as commissioners.
Okay, so then can you elaborate on what the process is following this? How do we turn presentations and recommendations made by foundations and philanthropy into something that can then be turned into policy recommendations as an advisory board to counsel if we can't even engage in their first draft? So we can make sure that their final draft includes things that we bring up while it's still in draft form? So it's a process question. So what's the process?
So the process is that, that's not your role as a commissioner. That's, you can do that as a member of the public. You know, these reports are now publicly available. You're welcome to communicate with your communities and encourage them to review the drafts and to submit their own public comments on it.
Okay, so then let me put this question in the form of a hypothetical to make sure that I understand the process. Okay, so Liberty Hill Foundation will give us a final report. Maybe we like some stuff, maybe we do like some stuff. So as an advisory board, we will then make recommendations on whether we agree or recommend their 100 policy recommendations, even though maybe we only want to recommend 30 or 40, like, how do we distinguish that? Are we only allowed to say we support the Liberty Hill report in its entirety? I don't understand where the process is and where we can break it down and truly engage as an advisory committee where, you know, we were put here because we're perceived experts.
Perhaps I can help.
No, if, can I just mention, Executive Director, so that I know you had your hand up, can we let Mr. Martin clarify? There we go. Yes, please.
Okay, yes, so again, we talked about this in our introductory presentation to the CMC, that the commission is limited in the way that it was created. It's advice has to go to city council and the mayor. So what you could do is you could actually provide a report on this report or a draft report up to city council, but it'll eventually be coming back to you again from city council back to CMO and then back to you in a final forum. So I think the most efficient way might be, and I think this is staff can clarify, is that their thought was that to give this as just a receive and file, just to get the word out now for the public, get public input on this, come back to the commission with a full report and take advice on that report that would then go to city council. So that's where the CMC's role would be, creating advice, and it could be suggesting particular things about that final report, but I think that's where, and correct me if I'm wrong, Martin, Executive Director Sigur, that that might be, that was where the advice was from staff on this report.
Yeah, I think what I wanted to add, Mr. Martin, is that what I learned from the city, what I learned is that because this commission is nominated, sorry, both by both the council and the mayor, it's unique. When normally other commissions are nominated by just the mayor, right? And therefore, it puts this commission in a different position. So I'm learning with the rest of you too. My assumption was that you could deliberate. So I learned recently that this is not the case, that you, and and the reason why we created this draft process is so that we give extra time to the public and to the commissioners as the public to comment on the report itself. So definitely want to respect, you know, the charter and the ordinance and the rules here, but I do want to emphasize that it is, it is new to me and I think we'll be pushing, we'll be creating new pathways for your comments, since this is a very unique commission.
Yes, and just if that's the case, then I think one of the beautiful things about being a new body and the beauty of the public policy process is that it's malleable. And if this is going to be the case, then maybe what we need to do is go back to council and go back to the mayor and say, we need to make an amendment to the way we are structured so that we can actually engage in engagement. So that's just my two cents. Thank you. Because I really, I don't know, I don't like the way you were cut off, Ms. Mikiya, Commissioner Mikiya. I think you were, you should have said a few things. And then I would have liked to ask some questions too.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ferguson.
I just have a general question. Where can the public access this draft report?
Yes, we posted publicly on our website and a prime.gov link is the process which we use and I'll have my staff resend that. And I think, oh, there it is. Okay, so this is where the public can find it. And we did send it out to the public and we sent it out to the CBOs that wanted to engage. And as time goes on and when we have our website and our newsletter, more and more people will be able to identify where it is listed publicly.
Okay, thank you.
And to be clear, if a member of the public wants to comment on the report, how do they do that?
They could send in an email and the email could have attachments. So like if they have their own small report that they want to submit, they could send an email with attachments or they could publicly comment at these meetings. So we were hoping some folks would come by today because folks were notified about today's meeting. But it may be that they want to wait until the 20th.
So as a member of the public, I'll include myself. I can send you an email as, or if the public can make a comment on the report?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, is that correct?
You'll have to restate the question for Lindsey.
As a member of the public?
Yes, yes, that is correct. Yes, as long, it's generally open to the public, so anyone is free to comment. Yes.
Excellent. So then, following that thread, a commissioner, acting as a member of the public, can make a comment in that way?
Exactly. Yeah, it's inappropriate for the commission to deliberate and opine at this time.
Understood. So if a commissioner wants to make a comment, they can do so as a regular member of the public, like everyone else.
Well, then, maybe we should do it like the neighborhood councils and have public comment after every item. And then we change our hats to the public as opposed to commissioners. Can we do that?
No, that would, we have to, we have to both abide by the rules of the city's charter as well as the rules of the Brown Act. And the charter is very clear on this issue that if, because this is an advisory commission and it's your role to advise counsel. It's
We've never made a motion to send this to council yet. So like, were we hearing this presentation as already an understanding that this was going to council?
This is not
I actually, well, then why can't we deliberate? I mean, to me, this is just a presentation from a philanthropy community group in Los Angeles that wants to show us what work they did in the last six months. I just, I just really don't understand where we're messing up here.
But maybe what we can do, so we can move forward as well, is when it is clear that the commissioners can make a comment through the public process as a member of the public, what we can do, if we need clarification, Mr. Martin or Ms. Eller, can we ask for that under new items? Do we need to? How can we clarify that or Commissioner Padi? Do you need a response after this meeting?
Um, I would like a response written out to me, please, explaining me exactly the technicalities related to why, and I would like for you to also point out the specifics in the charter, explaining why as commissioners, we are not allowed to question, advise, and engage on presentations presented by philanthropy.
Okay, I just want to clarify that it's the case that you can't do that as drafts, if these are going back.
Okay, well, then just put it in writing for me, please, so that we can move on with the meeting. So put it in writing for me. Point out the space in the charter that says that. And I wanted to emphasize that it's specific to presentations from philanthropy so that I'm also, you know, cognizant and ready when these presentations potentially come from departments or academia.
I think we can follow up there.
Thank you.
All right, we'll follow up there. Okay, thank you. I had already announced item six and we're ready to start the presentation. So let's please do so at this time.
Great, thank you. Just gonna wait. Great. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So my name is Emma French. I'm a PhD student in the Department of Urban Planning at UCLA and a fellow with the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office. So today I'm presenting the draft policy report that we've compiled on equitable building decarbonization. Next slide, please. So before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that I am currently working and living on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Tongva-Chumash and Tatavium nations. As we develop and adopt climate policies, it is vitally important that we acknowledge both the historic harms and the contemporary legacy of indigenous and racial violence that many communities in Los Angeles have experienced and continue to be impacted by. Recognizing this is just the first of many steps toward ensuring that new policies and plans do not exacerbate these inequities, but instead work to address them alongside the climate crisis. Next slide, please. So this report, this policy report was developed in response to a series of motions introduced and adopted by the Los Angeles City Council in the past year, calling for the development of a plan for building decarbonization in Los Angeles. The first of these motions explicitly called for the creation of policies and goals that align with energy and housing justice principles, which were identified alongside community advocates. And I've listed those specific principles here on the slide for you to reference. So building off of the CELA Part One Process Report, which Michelle and Andreas just presented, this policy report draft provides recommendations to help guide the city as it develops equitable building decarbonization policies and programs. Next slide, please. So the report is organized into five main sections. The first provides policy context, going into more detail about what I sort of presented in that last slide, explaining the impetus of the report and listing relevant programs and policies related to building decarbonization in Los Angeles. The second section covers the equity and justice context, drawing on gray and academic literature to explain the relationships between building decarbonization, housing, energy, health, the environment, and community resilience. The third section describes the methodology, which included analysis of data collected during the Climate Equity LA Building Decarbonization Series, analysis of data collected during community-led targeted focus groups and listening sessions, additional data collected through interviews and discussions with community and subject experts, and a review of gray and academic literature. The fourth section outlines the findings from the CELA series and the parallel focus groups and listening sessions. And the final section offers 10 broad recommendations for how to move toward equitable building decarbonization in the city. So I'm going to spend the remainder of my time focusing on the last two sections. Next slide, please. So Michelle and Andreas already went over some of the findings, really focused on the workshops. And this report expands upon that slightly to also include sort of what I've read in the literature. But just to reiterate briefly, the participants and residents that CMO engaged with noted a number of perceived benefits from transitioning to clean energy buildings. The most frequently mentioned benefit was improved public health due to reduced indoor and outdoor air pollution. Residents also expressed a strong desire for building decarbonization policies to approach housing and building upgrades holistically and to see them as an opportunity to improve habitability and safety, particularly of existing homes. Many noted the need for these upgrades to be done in tandem with deferred maintenance, public health, and water conservation improvements. Another perceived benefit was, that was mentioned, was the potential for this transition to create well-paid, high-road green jobs. Residents also recognized the benefits of this transition, not only for their own health and well-being, but also for the health of the planet and for future generations. And lastly, residents noted the potential of building decarbonization to improve community resilience. For example, by ensuring that all homes have access to affordable energy and cooling technologies as heat waves and general temperatures increase and intensify. Next slide, please. So as Michelle and Andreas said, while most residents and participants were generally supportive of the idea of building decarbonization, many raised a number of concerns about the potential for this transition to disproportionately burden communities that are already economically and environmentally vulnerable. So I'm going to go through these briefly because they connect directly to the recommendations, which I'll go over next. We've framed these challenges as needs to highlight the ways in which they need to be addressed. So the challenges include the need for continuous meaningful engagement with frontline communities at the grassroots level, the need to avoid increased rent and utility costs for tenants, the need for financial support for small landlords and affordable housing providers, the need for equitable distribution of environmental and economic benefits of decarbonization, the need for expansive outreach and enrollment in available incentive programs that prioritize low-income areas, and the need for increased capacity of building electrical systems as well as the electrical grid more broadly. Next slide, please. So I'm going to dive into the recommendations in the last 10 minutes I've got. The first recommendation is to include frontline communities in the design, implementation, and evaluation of all building decarbonization policies and programs. For the purposes of this report, we've defined frontline communities as those that have experienced systemic, economic, social, or environmental disparities and that are disproportionately vulnerable to environmental and climate hazards. Acknowledging and understanding the experiences of frontline communities is necessary in order to avoid unintended negative consequences of any climate policy, including building decarbonization. To facilitate this understanding, residents living in frontline communities must be included early on and on an ongoing basis through the design, implementation, and evaluation of these policies. We recommend that the city continue to collaborate with community coalitions such as the LEAP LA and REPOWER coalitions in order to learn from their on-the-ground experience and knowledge. We also recommend that the city consider creating a building decarbonization community advisory committee that can help bridge the space between the multiple agencies engaged in this work and the numerous community advocacy organizations that work with and in frontline communities. Next slide, please. Recommendation two is to leverage building decarbonization to improve public health and habitability. Buildings, of course, are where many of us live, work, and play. In order to avoid exacerbating existing public health disparities, building decarbonization policies and programs must be embedded with public health standards and supports to ensure that buildings are safe, resilient, as well as clean and efficient. We recommend that the city prioritize funding for building decarbonization in residential buildings with deferred maintenance needs to help achieve this goal. We also recommend that the city explore amending existing programs to include public health assessments and measures. Next slide, please. Recommendation three is to embed tenant protections in building decarbonization policies and programs. In order to avoid exacerbating economic disparities and displacing low-income tenants due to increased rent and utility burden, building decarbonization for both new and existing buildings must be embedded with basic tenant protections that prevent costs from being passed down and ensure that these communities are able to participate in the transition to clean energy buildings. We recommend, among other things, that the city extend the current utility debt moratorium, enact utility rate reform that protects low-income residents, and ban pass-through costs for decarbonization retrofits for rent-stabilized tenants, tenants in covenanted affordable units, and low-income tenants in non-rent-stabilized units. Next slide, please. Recommendation four is to embed affordable housing protections into building decarbonization policies and programs. The substantial upfront costs of decarbonizing existing buildings in particular has the potential to force smaller landlords and affordable housing providers out of the market, which could result in the loss of affordable units and increased corporate ownership of housing in Los Angeles. Ideally, we view building decarbonization as an opportunity to expand the individual and community-owned affordable housing in the city Ideally, we view building decarbonization as an opportunity to expand the individual and community-owned affordable housing in the city through land trusts and other alternative land and housing tenure models. This is also a chance, we believe, for the city to recognize that it is located on unceded indigenous land and to begin to imagine what decolonization, repatriation, and co-management of land could look like in Los Angeles. Next slide, please. Recommendation five is to embed worker protections into building decarbonization. Decarbonizing our buildings and maintaining the expanded grid and new electrical systems will require a large number of workers. In order to ensure that historically economically disadvantaged and climate-impacted communities benefit from and are included in the growing green economy, policies must be strengthened to ensure local hire, worker protections, and living wages through building decarbonization policies. We recommend that the city expand job training opportunities for green economy jobs in particular, support the creation of a state or county-wide fund for worker transition assistance, and require project contracts to follow level playing field requirements. Next slide, please. Recommendation six is to prioritize public funding for decarbonization of existing buildings in frontline communities. Federal and state funding for building decarbonization is being allocated and will make its way down to the local level in the coming months and years. In order to begin to address persistent racial, environmental, and economic injustices, the city should ensure that this funding is directed to frontline communities that are at the greatest risk of experiencing unintended negative consequences from decarbonization. In alignment with the National Justice Forty Initiative, we recommend that the city require that at least forty percent of federal, state, and local funds are directed to disadvantaged frontline communities and that an additional ten percent be allocated for projects that provide direct benefits for affordable housing. We also recommend that the city consider creating a healthy building transition fund to collect funding from various sources for building decarbonization, which could then be directly distributed to frontline communities. Next slide, please. Recommendation seven is to expand education, outreach, and technical assistance related to building decarbonization. Making sure that frontline communities have easy access to information and resources related to building decarbonization is critical for ensuring that the transition is inclusive. Engagement efforts should include educating tenants, workers, and building owners about the steps involved in the effects of this transition and the effects of this transition on their health, their economic well-being, and their daily lives. It also involves conducting community-co-designed targeted outreach to share resources about available incentives, financing, and other programs offered in Los Angeles. Lastly, it will be essential for the city to provide or facilitate provision of technical assistance to building owners in order to support compliance with any mandates. Next slide, please. Recommendation eight is to leverage existing decarbonization efforts to gather data on the technical and financial requirements of building decarbonization. There's a clear need for more nuanced data on the wide range of costs and logistical challenges associated with building decarbonization, most of which are of particular concern for tenants, affordable housing providers, and small landlords. More information is particularly needed about the cost of this transition for smaller buildings, especially small affordable housing units that have deferred maintenance needs and other additional upgrades, which would be made at the same time. More information is also needed about how LADWP is going to implement neighborhood and grid-level upgrades and what measures they can and should put into place to ensure that it is done equitably. Next slide, please. Recommendation nine is to design a flexible, equity-centered, multi-phase approach to building decarbonization. Decarbonizing all of Los Angeles's building stock will happen over many years and will require sustained financing and technical and political support from various city departments as well as support from the federal and state governments. While a mix of strategies will be needed to achieve widespread decarbonization, it is important that any new policies or programs be flexible enough to avoid unintended negative consequences, given the ongoing uncertainty about the full range of possible costs. As the city develops specific building decarbonization policies, we recommend including extended or flexible compliance deadlines for buildings and units with affordability covenants and for low-income homeowners. We recommend phasing in requirements for existing municipal, commercial, and multifamily buildings to maximize the climate and public health co-benefits of building decarbonization. We provide some more kind of detailed suggested phasing tiers in the report as well. Next slide, please. The last recommendation is to identify all new and existing possible sources of public, private, and philanthropic funding to support equitable building decarbonization. So this transition is going to require a monumental investment of financial resources in order to achieve decarbonization without displacement. And this will mean identifying new revenue streams and also new models of delivering those financial resources and services. In order to ensure that some communities are not left out of this transition, the city should work closely with nonprofit affordable housing developers and CBOs working in frontline communities to explore all potential sources and strategies of funding. You can go to the next slide. With that, I'm going to wrap up. And thank you all so much for your time and your work, and I look forward to your comments and questions.
Thank you for that, for the reasons that we have already discussed. We won't be commenting or questioning at the moment. But I will remind commissioners, as members of the public, you're more than welcome to make those comments through the process of public comment already described before, until we have clarification in future meetings. Thank you for the presentation. That was item six. We'll continue to item seven. The next item on the agenda is to make findings to allow the commission to continue teleconferencing meetings under Assembly Bill 361. I will ask Ms. Garradé from staff to read the findings into the record.
The findings are as follows. The Climate Emergency Mobilization Commission hereby finds and determines in accordance with AB 361, Section 3E3, the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, as originally proclaimed by the governor on March 4, 2020, remains active and/or that state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing and that the circumstances of the state of emergency continue to directly impact the ability for the members to meet safely in person and/or state or local officials continue to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing. Staff recommends approving a motion that adopts these findings.
Thank you for that. I'll invite a motion. Ask for a motion.
I move to support the approve the findings.
Thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Mihia. Is there a second?
I like, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, now we have to pull a discussion before we finally vote, right? That's Roberts-Rosen. And you know, that's what people that follow the Brown I want to see. And we don't just push things through the pipeline, right? We're allowed to talk now about this vote?
No, the public comment was at the beginning of the meeting.
I didn't say public comment. When you're on a serving body, someone makes a motion, you second, and then you leave it to discussion before the full body votes. So we have a motion. We've had a second. Now we discuss. May we begin discussion, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yeah, let me just make a couple of comments. One, I see your hand. Mr. Martin, let's just remind folks to please use your virtual hands so I can keep a little bit of order here. Mr. Martin, please go ahead.
Yeah, the comment is absolutely correct. You can discuss an item that is being moved in second. You could discuss it before a motion to determine what motion you want to bring. You discuss it after, before you vote. We'll leave it up to the commission to discuss it if needed.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to move the findings on Assembly Bill 361?
I believe you already have a motion on the table, but you're waiting on a second.
Yeah, but I was waiting on a second that we can have discussion. Is there? I thought there might have been a second, but let me.
Yeah. Commissioner Badegio, I believe, gave the second.
Let me just recognize, just for the record, Commissioner Mihia made the motion. Who made it the second?
Badegio. Padilla.
Padilla, second by Padilla. So good to have discussion. Is there a discussion on? I don't see any hands up. So we'll call the roll.
Indigenous Deborah Lino Tongva member seat vacant.
Well, I do have one question before we continue. This is approval of these. What are we approving? Like, what are we voting on? These are going to council? We're supporting them going to council?
No. So this is, we had a special meeting exactly for this because of the pandemic and the health crisis that we're experiencing. In order to meet virtually, we have to recognize the findings of AB 361. That's what we're voting on.
Oh, so we're not discussing the presentation that we just had. We're, I didn't even catch that. We had moved on to a different item.
Correct.
Got it. Wow, you guys are really pushing this meeting really fast. Anyways, please call the vote.
I'll, we'll call vote.
Deborah Lino Tongva member seat is vacant. Ex-Commissioner Rudy Ortega Jr. Absent. Indigenous Chumash member seat is also vacant. Ex-Commissioner Jacqueline Badegio.
Yes.
Michael Martinez.
Yes.
Oscar Monher. Absent. Commissioner Monica Mejia.
Yeah.
Luis Angel Martinez.
Yes.
Dora Fritse Armenta. Absent. Commissioner Alfonso DiRakto Jr.
Yes.
Vice President Antonio Sanchez.
Yes.
Jill Johnston.
Yes.
Ross Selin.
Yes.
President Daniel Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey Rose Midoff. You rose midup. It looks like you're on mute.
It looks like you sound, but we're not hearing a response. Commissioner Madoff, we don't hear your response.
Maybe we can come back to her.
Okay. The first youth member seat is vacant. Next, Commissioner Michelle Gutierrez.
Yes.
Imelda Padilla.
Yes.
Jocelyn Warka.
Yes.
Give one more opportunity to Commissioner Madoff.
Hi, sorry, my thing wasn't working. I apologize. Yes.
Thank you.
First Vice President Sanchez. There are thirteen i's, zero no's, zero extensions, and three absences.
Thank you. So we'll count that as thirteen i's, zero no's, zero extensions, and three absences. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight. The next item on the agenda is electing a president for the commission. I will ask if any commissioner would like to nominate someone for president. You can either self-nominate or nominate another commissioner. I think at this moment, should we also recognize that we had already two nominations? One was for Commissioner Padilla and the other was for Commissioner Padilla. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And I'll mention it a third time. Any other nominations? Hearing none. What I'll do, oh, there's a hand up. Commissioner Martinez?
I'm not sure if this will complicate, but I just have a question. If we could nominate yourself, Vice President Sanchez.
Well, thank you for that. I imagine that you can.
Other than I would like to.
Thank you for that. I'm very flattered. I was not expecting that. Here I was zipping through the next item. I really appreciate your nomination. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to decline. But thank you, Commissioner Martinez, for your confidence. I appreciate your nomination. Thank you very much. At this moment, then, I'll invite. Thank you again. Again, very grateful. Thank you. I'll invite both commissioners to maybe give a one or two-minute comment about their nomination, about the office here. I don't want to show any bias, so if anybody wants to.
I went first last time, so please, Commissioner Padilla, go first.
Thank you.
Well, yes, no problem. Thank you so much, Commissioner Padilla. Jacqueline Badegio, it's an honor to serve on this commission with you. As we can see from today's meeting, I've just been sitting here. My heart's been smiling because I'm so happy to see the engagement that's going on. As I mentioned last time, that's something that's very important to me. We have a lot of work to do. And again, I would say I'm here to support in any way. I'm looking forward to getting to the committees. And I just want to encourage everyone because the reality is, you know, it can be difficult and we have decisions we have to make. We have to worry about things like conflict of interest and how is that going to interfere with our day-to-day. And I'm looking also, I'm looking for also to the education of the commission so we can all be educated and operate where we're comfortable and confident so we can make the best decisions for our community. And in a sense, it's a blessing because we all have the opportunity to really build this commission to greatness and really structure it in a way where we really can, you know, make decarbonization something very tangible to where each and every Angelino can relate to it. And that's something that's important to me. So, you know, I shout out to my opponent in this election. Thank you so much for speaking up. And just thank you. I would love to serve in any capacity, whether it is as a regular commissioner or the chair. But I do, I would love to serve as the chair if you will have me to help give the structure that's needed. And when I say give it the structure, that's something that we all do together. So thank you for service.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that comment. That was about a minute and a half. So Commissioner Padilla, the floor is yours.
Awesome. Well, thank you again, everyone, for this opportunity. As I mentioned last time, I was nominated and I appreciate the nomination. And I'm going to be honest with all of you. The last thing that I expected to happen in this meeting was for you guys to get a little glimpse of myself in action. So the thing with me is I've been running in and out of LA City hospitals fourteen years old, as I was part of the LA Youth Council for Mayor Han many moons ago. So it has been my hobby, my passion, to be involved in a local community organizing for the sake of policy development for a very long time. One of my first activities in policy-community engagement was when I was actually still in high school and I got a bunch of my high school classmates to come and make sure that waste management didn't receive a permit to get a ninety-foot mountain built in my backyard, as I do live in the polluted industrial region of the northeast San Fernando Valley. So I've been mobilizing for a very long time for the sake of keeping our communities clean. And then after college, I continued that trend. Post-college, came back to the community, continued in that trend by being a youth organizer and then a community organizer for the organization. organizer and then a community organizer for the organization of Pukema Beautiful. I still have a relationship with Pukema Beautiful, and I also got to work for another organization that was mentioned in our presentation today of Lane for raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars. Both great organizations, both organizations that I still work with. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I recently had the opportunity this summer to work for as a consultant to the city of Los Angeles. Um, I was brought on as a consultant to help one of the council offices clean up a very an eyesore of a building. Um, and within two months, I was able to get the Department of Building and Safety to finally take it down. Um, and I bring up that story to just mention that departments don't just listen to reports and move. It really takes a lot of work to push the city. And if given the opportunity to serve here, you can count on me on being that for all of us collectively.
Excellent. At this point, then, we will now open the floor to a general vote on the nominees for position of President of the Commission. Ms. Angeline calls your, when Ms. Angeline calls your name, please state the name of the nominee you wish to vote for. So you're either going to say one or the other. Uh, so please, let's let's start the vote.
Indigenous Gaberlino Tongva member seat is vacant. Next Commissioner Rudy Ortega Junior. Absent. Indigenous Tumash member seat is also vacant. Next Commissioner Jacqueline Badajo.
Jacqueline Badaja.
Mayor Michael Martinez.
Jacqueline Badajo.
Mayor Oscar Monher. Absent Commissioner Monica Mejia.
Jacqueline Badajo.
Mayor Luis Angel Martinez.
Commissioner Padilla.
Commissioner Dora Fritze Armenta. Absent Commissioner Alfonso Directo Junior.
Commissioner Jacqueline Badajo.
Vice President Antonio Sanchez.
Shepherd Diop.
Commissioner Jill Johnston.
Commissioner Badajo.
Commissioner Ross Zelen.
Commissioner Badajo.
Second Vice President Daniel Ferguson.
I abstain.
Commissioner Lindsay Rose Madoff.
Commissioner Bodeho.
The first youth member seat is vacant. Commissioner Michelle Gutierrez.
Commissioner Padilla.
Commissioner Imelda Padilla. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
I myself, please.
Mayor Jocelyn Duarte.
I abstain.
One second, please, as I tally the votes. First Vice President Sanchez, there are two extensions, three absences. The number of votes for Commissioner Badajo is seven, and the number of votes for Commissioner Padilla is four.
Great, thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I appreciate you all, and I'm here to represent you all. I'll take any hits for all of you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Badajo. Thank you, Commissioner Padilla. Uh, also, uh, so I'll just read the count one more time. That was seven for for Commissioner Badajo and four for Commissioner Padilla. At this point, then, I will invite any commissioner to make, but do we have to? Do we have to take another motion? We do. I see you. Okay. I now invite any commissioner to make a motion and second a motion to elect the winner of our election Commissioner Jacqueline Badajo for president. So we just, uh, we took a vote. Somebody won. At this point, just formally, we need a motion for just to for the record.
I'll make the motion to elect Commissioner Jacqueline Badajo.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Directo, and that was the second by Commissioner Makhia.
Yes.
I see heads nodding. Please, Ms. Angeline, take the roll.
Indigenous Gaberlino Tongva member seat is vacant. Commissioner Rudy Ortega Junior. Absent. Indigenous Tumash member seat is also vacant. Commissioner Jacqueline Badajo.
Yes.
Mayor Michael Martinez. Mayor Michael Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Oscar Monher. Absent Commissioner Monica Mejia.
Yes.
Mayor Luis Angel Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Dora Fritze Armenta. Absent Commissioner Alfonso Directo Junior.
Yes.
Vice President Antonio Sanchez.
Yes.
Jill Johnston.
Yes.
Ross Zelen.
Yes.
Second Vice President Daniel Ferguson.
Yes.
Lindsey Rose Madoff.
Yes.
First youth member seat is vacant. Commissioner Michelle Gutierrez.
Yes.
Mayor Imelda Padilla.
Yes.
Mayor Jocelyn Duarte.
Commissioner Duarte, we can't hear you.
Yes.
I would say yes.
Thank you. First Vice President Sanchez, there are thirteen eyes, zero no's, zero extensions, and three absences.
Great, thank you. So I'm hearing thirteen eyes, zero no's, uh, zero extensions and three absences. Thank you very much. Again, congratulations, Commissioner Badajo. Uh, at our next meeting, you will chair. Uh, we'll move on to item nine. Uh, Director Segura, are there any announcements from staff?
Um, really none at this time, but I do want to reiterate that the next meeting, we will have the final, and it sounds like we will be able to have the commissioners comment at that time.
Okay, looking forward to 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 that. Uh, thank you for that. I'll move on to item ten. Is it okay to invite commissioners to say anything if they want to, Mr. and Mrs. City Attorney, before we adjourn?
Um, certainly, if if it's just an announcement of some type, you can welcome a brief announcement, as long as there isn't discussion on something that isn't on the agenda.
Understood. Commissioner Director?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question. Is it the final for both of those reports coming next time?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I have a question if, I mean, it might be final to them, but what if we have a question related to, we would like for them to like change format or be more clear in how they term things like, are we still able to advise them to switch their final? Or is that really to their discretion based on our our comments?
I think I would recommend. Can I respond, Mr. Martin?
It's it's up to you, Marta. I can answer questions if needed.
I think what else is, we'll let you respond again for commissioners. If you want to make an announcement, let's go ahead and do that. Uh, Executive Director Segura, if you'd like to respond.
Yeah, I think I recommend two things from what I've heard thus far is definitely try to get your comments for your for the draft in before September second uh, as a member of the public. And then the day of, if there are other significant changes, that obviously will be up up for discussion. And you either, you know, you could stop it. You can you can make sure that it doesn't go through if it's not ready. Um, I think that that is your prerogative as a commission. That makes sense. And 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 but 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 I think I'll let Mr. Martin respond in terms of like any directions for changes and things like that during the discussion for the next meeting, since I'm still learning.
May I address your?
Yes, please.
Um, yes, so um, this really is is the power of of the commission is advising city council. So when this report actually comes to the commission for delivery to city council, that's when this commission can sit down, discuss, take a hard look at that report as a body, and come to a decision with a recommendation for city council. So that recommendation could be to make changes, could be to proceed in entirely different direction, but it will be the will of this body to make a report to city council on that policy advice.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Makhia, your hand is up.
Yeah, so I I just went to the CMO website and then and the draft reports are not up yet. I assume they'll be up after today's meeting ends. But sort of like, how are we advertising this to the public so that they can also make comments? Obviously, we know it's there because we're on the commission, but like, how do we, you know, really get the word out?
Well, well, I'll say we should answer, of course, we should answer Commissioner Makhia's question, but I also don't want to get into into discussion, right? So I mean, I can also ask staff to 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 report back during the next meeting. Uh, that might be the most appropriate move, but Commissioner Makhia, if you if you would like the executive director to provide a short answer. Yes.
Okay, so we have three ways to communicate this right now. One is through our eBlast system, our official CMO eBlast system, and we have about a thousand folks on there. The other is we we send it directly to all of our anchor and ally organizations. They received it for this meeting, for example. Um, and we also share it with other city departments who have, like the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and all the neighborhood councils receive it as well. So and then by mid-September, we'll have a website, like I said, and a newsletter, so that will help disseminate. And all of you have the power to disseminate it to your circles of influence too. And then we publicly post it at City Hall, like that's the old school way, publicly posting it. And and actually, that fulfills the the requirements of the Brown Act. Some some commissions only post it. Uh, and 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 they leave it at that, but I think I think what what we want to do is make it more available and more accessible.
Thank you. Maybe for future, as I mentioned before, we can just keep in our our outreach efforts. And then when when it's appropriate, Executive Director, so we can talk about that or present on on or give an update. Uh, Commissioner Padilla?
I have a timeline question. Uh, so once we have, we're going to get a presentation on the final at our next meeting. And then when are they taking it to City Hall? And will we have enough time? And how do we say what we think and feel about it to council? Like, will there be like an aggressive note taker that day, taking our comments? Are we going to go through one item at a time? Um, is staff then going to do a report on what we said related to their report? Or is it like a rubber stamping of yes, we like it, no, we don't like it? Um, I just really want to know what the next steps are preceding us seeing this next one. Because I just don't know what it's going to look like, right?
This is so. The timeline, and then maybe just for clarification as well, too, we should consider uh, having that part of your next report, so we understand what's happening.
Yeah, I think I'd rather set a timeline via email to all the commissioners because I don't have it by memory. I know that the the council has has an ideal timeline that they've set forth, and they would have preferred, for example, that we have everything ready this month and submitted to them this month. But I wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for everyone to engage. So that's why we extended it to September twentieth. But but be that as it may, when we submit it September twentieth, by then, the council will have decided when they're going to to hear it. And so I will be keeping you all posted and updated as to their more specific timeline. So if.
What I'm hearing is we'll also hear from the L.A. City Council on what their terms are.
Yeah, so I'll I'll be the liaison. I'll I'll reach out to city council, make sure they provide me with their timeline and and inform the commission.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson.
Kind of off topic here, but just with respect to High Road Green Jobs, I just want to let everyone know that Lacy will put in on an all-women EV network technician training program. It's launching September twelfth. Uh, the application deadline is tomorrow, but I'm pretty confident we're going to extend it for a few days. Um, and so I definitely would love for you all to share with your respective networks and organizations. Uh, this will be a training that will be in partnership with Charger Help, uh, which repairs broken EV charging stations. Um, and also want to acknowledge our sponsors, which is on the heels of the CARB Step Grant, CARB, and also LADOT. Um, and so with your permission, Vice President Sanchez and Director Segura would definitely love to send this to the staff to disseminate to the commissioners should they like to share with their their organizations.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Maybe the best way to move forward is that they come from you, Executive Director Segura, just to not get and get into any reply all situations or.
Yeah, and I think what will probably happen is once we have this newsletter in place, we'll we'll not just disseminate to commissioners, we'll disseminate to everybody on our newsletter as well. Commissioner Ferguson. I mean, Vice President Ferguson.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands. I think we're done. So, uh, the final item is adjournment. The next meeting will be the commission's regular meeting scheduled on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at one P.M. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care of you.